Yeah, and that, and then.
Good evening, everyone, and we apologize for being a little bit late. We had a few technical difficulties, and I trust that we are doing okay now. So, welcome to our community, to our town hall, the first one of this school year, and we hope to provide for you quite a bit of information based upon the questions that you shared. I'd like to provide a brief introduction just to some of the big ideas that are happening in SRV USD. I continue to share my thanks and gratitude to our staff, to our community, and most importantly, to our students, because there was a period of time in June and July when I think we felt that we were going to be able to return to this school year even more normally than we've been able to, and some of the challenges have certainly weighed upon us. Again, you've heard me say this, if you tune into board meetings, you know, there is a great energy on our campus, and we're grateful to all for making that happen. Some of the things that continue to make things stressful, and your questions certainly allowed us to formulate our thinking, is the whole testing quarantine process remains challenging. We know that as our students have returned to campus, they're getting used to being on campus again, and there are some social emotional challenges and even some learning challenges that we're working with. But we need you, our families, to continue to partner with us and our staff, because when that partnership is working effectively, we know that we can really deal with all challenges, no matter how difficult they are. I am grateful to our community, because we went through a lot of stress last year, a lot of intense stress. And though I've just said it's not over, I can feel that sense of calm coming back into our community when we are dealing with the challenges. I get a sense that we are able to do so in an effective manner, and I think that's going to serve ultimately our students in the long run. Our strategic directions have been focus, have been our focus as we start this school year. I think you've heard me speak about them before, but briefly, our equity commitment is about ensuring that we have conditions for all students to be successful and accepting the fact that some of those conditions do not exist, and it's our job as educators, as the adults, working closely with our students, to create those important conditions for all students. Our commitment to deep learning is about ensuring that our kids have access to learning that allows them to think deeply, to be creative, to collaborate and work as teams, because we know our students must have the skills to really be able to work effectively in all kinds of innovative places and spaces. We're doing that now, based upon all of the great work that has always happened in San Ramon Valley Unified School District, and we want to take that to the next level. And our commitment to social emotional well-being is front of mind, as I've just shared. And it's not just about the important courses we offer, it's not just about the significant counseling that's available, but it's also how we focus social emotional well-being in everything that we do. And to that end, our strategic directions are grounded in the commitment that we're expanding the definition of success on the foundation of our academic excellence that our students have always been able to accomplish. More about that later. But part of our strategic directions is also about a culture of responsiveness. Most recently, you would have received information from our district office, where we've tried to clarify where you go when you have questions or challenges. Obviously, your teacher or staff member first, your principal, if it's a school-based matter, second, your assistant principal or your counselor, if your school has access to those resources. And when you need support from the district level, we've been really clear about where you go and who you call, so you don't have to struggle navigating us, that you call into one place if it is a special education question, you call into another place if it is a district-level question, and it's our job to be sure that we get you to the best place possible. We're committed to shared leadership, and I think this is a very important piece for me to emphasize. When you look at our strategic directions document, it speaks to sharing leadership between staff, students, and parents. And we're still learning how to do this effectively. I know we've always worked closely with our community, but we want to take it to the next level, and that's going to take some practice, and we appreciate your involvement and engagement. Last part of our strategic directions is our effective use of resources. And to that end, we have begun the access to excellence process. This process simply means that we understand the standard. We want all of our kids to have access to in San Ramon Valley Unified School District. That standard includes access to counselors, nurses, social workers, access to reading and math intervention specialists, equitable access to the arts, additional secondary course options, appropriate salary and benefit for our staff, so we can attract and retain the best for our students, opportunities for effective professional learning, and regular and scheduled technological and curricular resource updates. That standard has some challenges. Nobody would argue with the importance of it. However, we need our access to excellence process to help our community understand, do we agree on this standard? It will look at how we're presently funded, as well as how we gain revenues from other sources, and then it will speak to the gaps that we need to close in order for us to be able to provide this educational experience for your children. That's where we need the creativity of our community. So in the part that I want to introduce, I'm going to ask Tammy Hurley to share a very short video that I hope depicts this access to excellence process most explicitly, and then I'm going to turn it over to our team here to answer some of your questions. Then we will have an opportunity for you to ask any clarifying questions after that, and then I'll come back on at the very ending to make some closing remarks. So Tammy, if you could try to queue up the video. So I guess we are having the evening of technological difficulties. Again, thank you to our community for your patience. We're going to see if we can get this working before the end of our town hall. So I'm going to turn it over to our team to answer questions that you have submitted. So if we can put that PowerPoint presentation up, and then I'll turn it over to you, and maybe if our first speaker can just get started, because again, I think we just have to accept the fact that it's not going to be smooth on the technological side. Over to you, I think Debbie, you're the beginning speaker.
Yes, thank you so much, Sean, and good, I guess it's good evening, everyone. My name is Debbie Pettish, and I am the Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction here at the district. So next slide, please, Tammy. So here you can see, we have a plethora of district administrators here to answer your questions. We, of course, received all of your questions and looked through them and tried to summarize them in the answers to them as best as possible. So next slide, please. So several themes emerged. One is, of course, instruction and equity. Another one is student well-being. Schoolagie, we had a fair amount of questions on personnel. We have two people from our HR department here today. COVID-19, of course, continues to be a topic on many people's minds. School lunches, schedules, and traffic buses, and then just other general questions. Next slide, please. All right, and then John mentioned the importance of our strategic directions, and the idea that they're really guiding everything that we do. They're embedded into every conversation that we have, especially this idea of culture of responsiveness. So effectively serving all stakeholders by listening, responding promptly, changing practices when appropriate, and communicating the rationale for decisions, so students remain the focus of our efforts. Next slide, Tammy. Thank you. So I reviewed all of your questions, and there were some themes that emerged that I wanted to highlight today. One of the big questions that we got several times was this idea of learning loss. And so, in any given year, of course, students are going to enter the school year with, you know, call it what you want, learning loss or gaps in their understanding of content and process. With that being said, we understand that these gaps are more frequent and maybe a little bit bigger than they typically have been in the past because of the way that kids have done school over the last year and a half. So please know that that is something that we recognize, and that we're working really, really, really hard to fill those gaps. And so are, of course, your staff, your certified and classified personnel that work with your children day in and day out. So one of the most important things that we identified was, how are we going to know if students have these gaps, right? What's going to be standard across the district? So you may have heard us talk before about a tool called FastBridge, and these are assessments that we are administering to all students in English and math in the fall, and then again in the winter, and then again in the spring. And that will give us a better idea across the district, at individual sites, and with individual students, the extent to which students are making progress on the core standards. So sites and individual teachers are, of course, also looking at this data in order to determine how to best intervene when students are, do have a gap in their learning. One important point, I'm sorry that I missed, I do want to, we had a question about students with IEPs, and we do want to assure you that any student who has an IEP does have access to the testing accommodations, and will be given those accommodations when taking the assessments. So we use that assessment data, and we provide interventions at the site, and they're, of course, in tiers, so tier one being kind of the least intrusive, up to tier three, which is a pretty intensive intervention. So our sites already had a really strong intervention framework, really across the board, but we knew that we needed to strengthen that framework in order to address the gaps in their learning this year. So we've done a variety of things. We have intervention liaisons, and they work at our sites alongside the principal, the assistant principals, the teachers, to really evaluate what interventions currently exist at that site, and determine how to strengthen those interventions in order to support each and every student and meet them where they are. We also have added several intervention teachers in the area of reading and math, or intervention sections, additional sections at the secondary level, in order to support students who may be struggling again in English or math. And then, and you know, I'm really focused right now on the academic supports, but I don't want to ignore the social emotional supports, but my colleague, Jess Coulson, will talk about that in a few minutes, because we've also added some personnel in terms of social emotional supports that have been wonderful, such as our elementary counselors. We've also purchased some additional resources to support our teachers in doing effective interventions with students, and just supporting them in general, even with that baseline instruction. So you may have heard of a program called Lexia, and so Lexia has been really popular amongst our teachers, and a lot of them use it to support their students in acquiring better reading skills. And we also have tools such as iXL that is used across all grade levels for struggling students to better access English and math. And then finally, another question I got before turning it over to Christine Mahardo is about remote options that we may have going into the winter. And so, as you probably already know, at our Venture Campus, we offer virtual independent study options, and those will remain, but we do not anticipate at this time adding anything else to those programs. So thank you, everyone, and I will now turn it over to Christine.
Sure, thank you, Debbie. I wanted to take a few minutes to welcome everyone this evening, and to spend a few minutes answering a question around action during quarantine. We've gotten a lot of feedback regarding quarantine instruction. We really wanted to emphasize that we are working in the next couple of weeks to really process and clarify site by site what that looks like for you as family and students to receive your work on a day-to-day basis if your students are out on quarantine. We do understand the changes with kids' learning when they are absent, and we also realize that each child needs something different when they are out on quarantine. So we're working very closely with our school sites, our counselors, our principals, our teachers, to make sure each of our students communicate with their school site to get what they need when they are out on quarantine. That being said, we want to encourage you to continue to reach out to your school site administration, to advocate for what your child needs, and in the upcoming weeks, we will be sending out some more information site by site around how you can navigate that process at each of our individual schools. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Hong to talk a little bit about equity.
Thank you, Christine. Hi, my name's Hong Lee, and I'm the Director of Educational Equity. I wanted to go into talking a little bit about our strategic directions. One of them happens to be on equity. We want to ensure that all of our students are empowered to reach their full potential by valuing the student voice, addressing systemic inequities, and closing opportunity gaps. And I want to emphasize that we are ensuring all students, we're looking at every single one of them. As we go through our equity work, we definitely want to delve into diversity, inclusion, equity, and looking is that we are responding to discrimination and hate on our campuses, looking at our different policies that we have in place, whether we need to go back and revisit and revise policies and procedures and practices, or to implement new ones, because we did not have it prior. So that is something that we definitely will be working with our steering committees, as well as our subcommittees on. We want to also make sure that we're strengthening our learning in implicit, as well as explicit bias, and providing professional development at sites. We want to support our staff in transitioning back. We know that it's been hard and difficult through our COVID process, as well as our COVID time. So we want to make sure that we're ensuring that support that is needed in our curriculum that we actually have. We want to make sure that we're starting to diversify our curriculum even more by meeting the needs of all of our students, and by teaching students to appreciate and respect all of their peers and the different diversities that are occurring at campuses. We are looking at putting different programs in place. One of them happens to be supporting our LGBTQ communities. We have been putting in GSA clubs at our secondary to provide safe, as well as inclusive environments. We are happy to say that we have prison clubs at about half of our elementary school sites, and are planning to push it out to all of our elementary school sites in due time. And of course, our goal is to provide inclusive environments for all of our students, because we know that this is really important work. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Linda to talk a little bit more about equity and spend.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Linda Rallie-Tom, the self-executive director. As Hong talked about, we're really working on providing inclusive environments for all of our students, including our students in special education. And to that end, we're really working to support our site teams in how they are implementing those individualized education programs for all of our special education students in terms of instruction, but also in terms of student social emotional well-being, and how we help support them as they are now back on campus full-time, in terms of being part of campus, part of that team, in how they move forward. We're also really looking at how we provide equitable supports across all environments, as well as making sure that our teachers all know what students do have those special education needs in their classrooms, as well as what possible accommodations they may have, including, as Debbie mentioned earlier, those accommodations for any testing or other activities that may occur throughout a student's day. We also want to address and recognize that we do continue to have significant staffing gaps in special education. We, like our neighboring districts, are experiencing that, where we are having a extreme special education staffing shortage in California, and like our neighboring districts, we're really working to try to fill those gaps. We're working very collaboratively and closely with our human resources department on creative options, as well as the recruitment process. So we'll continue to work together to support those students and all students, as well as moving all equity forward for everyone. I want to pass it on to Jessica, who's going to talk a little bit about social emotional well-being.
Thank you, Linda. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jessica Coulson, and I'm the coordinator for social emotional learning for the districts, and I want to thank you for being here, and I want to thank you for taking the time to give up an hour of your evening and to sit and listen to how we are supporting our students, because it is truly a collaborative effort, and I'm just very glad to be a part of it. I also would like to acknowledge that we are still in the middle of a pandemic, and that means a lot of different things for a lot of different people, and some days are great, and some days are not so great. And I think it's just really important to acknowledge that while we have the great days, it's also okay if we're not okay for a day. And so to keep that in mind when we send our kids off to school in the morning, when we welcome them home, when I try to wrangle my seven-year-old dad, and he just doesn't want to do it in the morning, it's all part of this coming back together and figuring out our new normal. So thank you for being here, and thank you for taking the time. The transition back has been a little bit more challenging than I think many of us thought. I think that many of our teachers are finding that they are, they teach things that students in their grade level would have come to them already knowing. And so teachers are really taking the time to slow down, to do check-ins with their students, to kind of figure out where the needs are, and where they can meet those social emotional needs for their students. Well, four of our comprehensive high schools now have the centers up and running, and they are being highly and heavily utilized by all of our students, either for, or for a more formal referral process. I know that our leadership teachers are working incredibly hard to create spirit weeks and spirit days and rallies and events for our students to make them feel like it is a return to normal on campus, as much as it can feel that way. And then just that staff is continuing to prioritize the well-being of our students. One of your comments that came in said that your middle and your high school student were thriving for the first time because their teachers are not assigning homework, and that's exactly what we need to be doing and to continue to be doing. As Debbie Pettish mentioned earlier, one of the things about which I am most excited is the onboarding of 11 elementary school counselors to round out, so there's at every level of school this year. They are paired with our MTSS liaisons, and they are each split between the same two sites at the elementary level. They work together with the site principals to plan strategies and interventions for tier-one supports. They will also be engaging in tier-two and tier-three support, so a little bit more exclusive and more to the individual needs of the students. And then many of our students in grades 12 have just completed or are just finishing up this week the Student Wellbeing questionnaire, and that was a 16-question survey that, unlike the one given in the spring, which measured, which was a crisis response, this one measures overall student well-being. It has four different subcategories, which are joy of learning, school connectedness, educational purpose, and academic efficacy, in addition to giving an overall composite rating for student well-being. This data will be used to inform how sites and how the district plans to implement more tier-one supports for our students at both the site level, as well as district level. And we will be doing this questionnaire twice yearly in order to give us ongoing data, so that we can continue to improve how we support our students. So thank you so much. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Christopher George, who will be speaking to Schoolagie.
Hi, thanks, Jessica. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us tonight. I'm talking here to talk about our new learning management system, which we have implemented this year, Schoolagie, as which, of which I'm sure you're aware. We want to first and foremost, thank you for working with us and learning this new management system. Any new system, any new system of this size, any tech rollout of this size, is going to have some bumps, and we've certainly seen our share. We've seen a lot of success with it as well, and we're really proud of the progress that parents, staff, and our students, most importantly, have made, getting to where they are with Schoolagie. We had a lot of questions, we had some questions in your questionnaire about parent, student, and staff involvement in the selection process. We want to assure everyone that this was a year-long selection process dating back to March of 20, or summer of 2020, I believe, at which point, when a lot of districts were rushing into a selection of a learning management system due to the oncoming remote year, our district chose to engage in a year-long selection process, which involved all stakeholders. There were over 60 members of that committee, and it did involve parents, students, and a wider range of staff. This process was presented to the board in March 2020, and that presentation, I believe, is available, both in that board meeting, and I believe it's online. Most of the questions we received from your questions involved the consistent use of Schoolagie, best practices, standardization of use, how we're actually using Schoolagie. We are working very hard to tweak and teach our staff and teach our kids and teach you best ways, and making little changes along the way to our, to how we're currently using it at a very basic level. Specifically, during the month of October, we are working very, we're working with our staff on gradebook practices. That's our theme for the month of October. And as we get into November and December, it's already been decided that we're working on the best practices in assigning areas and standardizing practice. That'll work on things that were brought up in question, such as aligning how assignments are posted, collecting assignments, what gets shown on the Schoolagie page, what alerts are received. Currently and right now, we're working on gradebook and gradebook setup with our teachers. They've been remarkably patient and flexible with us. That process has been a lot more bumpy than we expected, and that's taking a little bit of time and effort on the part of our staff, and we just want to acknowledge that that's been, that's been there for them, and we want to thank you for working through it. We're making sure that parents and students are continually updated on the progress and get what they need in order to learn. We are working on more student-centered materials to go out regarding Schoolagie and Schoolagie use, and we're continuing our family trainings. We had two sessions earlier in the last month, and those were very well-attended, over 400 people at each one, I believe, and we've scheduled two more, and those are on November 3rd and November 4th. We'll have two more family sessions on Schoolagie. Teachers will continue to receive training as we go forward. Every site has a site liaison specifically dedicated to Schoolagie, and we want to again commend that, those staff for their incredible work. They've had a lot put on them, and we are trying to lighten their load by working with them a little bit more. Every site has liaison. Our November 2nd PD Day, Professional Development Day, will have a Schoolagie afternoon dedicated to us, and sites that can't join us for that will have that time made up. So we have a lot of training on the way. Staff trainings will be held throughout the year. At least 30 minutes of a staff meeting per month is to be devoted to Schoolagie, as long, as well as 45-minute help sessions for staff. So I want to, in response to one of the questions, I want to make sure you know that we are working very hard to get staff trained there. We do ask for patience and flexibility with it. This is an incredibly large school rollout during a tumultuous year that has, as Dr. Moye said, a lot of unexpected challenges. It's a lot to ask of our staff, and we acknowledge that. And so we ask It's a lot to ask of our staff and we acknowledge that. And so we ask you in in joining with us to just give them as much patience and flexibility as they can. They've been incredible as far as working with us and being patient with our mistakes and with a new tool. We are working very hard with the School G team to make sure that they understand that we need a little bit more help than we've gotten to make this more effective and they've responded well over the last few weeks. So we are working on it and we know it's been a little frustrating, a little bumpy, but we've also seen great success. When we look at actual usage and how kids are actually using it and how staff is actually using it, people are right about where we expected them to be at the end of first quarter. There's basic usage. People have logged on. People are able to see courses and coursework. People are able to generally turn in assignments and see the calendar. And for a rollout with 70, over 75,000 people working on it, we're pretty happy about those aspects. So we're kind of past that basic stage with families and with kids and with teachers and we're ready to really tweak and maximize our use and make sure that it works as well as it can for teachers, staff, parents. And most importantly, as always, our kids. So with that, I will thank you for your questions and I will hang and hand it over to Keith Roginsky and Melody Jones for our human resources. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Chris. Good evening, everyone. My name is Keith Roginsky and I'm the district's assistant superintendent for human resources. And as Chris just mentioned, our executive director of human resources, Melanie Jones and I are going to spend a few minutes presenting to you on personnel topics that you posed prior to tonight's session. So with regards to personnel, this school year has honestly brought about the greatest staffing challenges that we've ever seen here in San Ramon Valley Unified and in public education in general. Several reasons for this, some of which include retirements that we received, significantly increased resignations at the end of both last and this past school year, relocations of employees out of education and out of the air and to other states. That was really big for San Ramon Valley this year. Enhanced unemployment benefits that some people away from the workforce and fear of working in schools in a COVID-19 environment. So all of those factors contributed to the staffing challenges that we're experiencing. These labor challenges have been exacerbated by a general labor shortage at the local, the state and the national level and are not by any means unique to us here in San Ramon Valley. Despite this, as of this week, we've we've hired over 200 new certificated staff members in our classrooms across the district. We have filled nearly 275 vacant classified positions between last year and this year. And we have recently hired 70 new certificated substitute teachers and classified substitutes as well. But nonetheless, we we still struggle and we have a long way to go for our staff to staff to address, to adequately address our staff needs and our operational needs. So I'm going to turn it on over to my colleague Melanie Jones, who's going to talk to you a bit about what we've done to address our staffing needs in this challenging environment. Melanie.
Thanks, Keith. Good evening, parents and community members. I'd like to take a few minutes to share with you information steps that the district has taken related to staffing. We've used several approaches this year to market and recruit for our staffing needs and to hire employees for the 2122 school year. Last year, we participated in several teacher recruitment fairs and hosted our own fair in the spring. We've also tapped into our substitute teacher pool to advertise our hiring needs. And we've even been able to contract several of them to work as classroom teachers in both general and special education. We wrote, received and are in the final stages of implementing a grant from the state of California, which we call Project Propel to help support interested classified employees in completing their degrees and credentials to become special education teachers. Last month, we hosted two virtual classified recruitment fairs to direct to address our staffing shortages in critical areas such as custodians, child nutrition, bus drivers, instructional assistants and campus safety staff. We advertised and marketed our staffing needs on the internet, social media, on a local radio station, in our school site newsletters and on the district's website. We've also taken opportunities to consolidate positions and reassign staff to where needs exist. And we've also contacted former employees to make them aware of current employment opportunities and offered our part time staff opportunities to extend their work hours to address our staffing needs. We've also communicated to our recent certificated retirees and asked them to consider serving as certificated substitutes. And we've contracted through outside agencies to hire staff, especially in special education and related services to secure individuals to serve our students where our efforts have not resulted in the hiring of staff that we hope for. All of these efforts and others are continuous and ongoing. In the meantime, we've done and will continue to provide our students and staff with the very best supports and services that we can provide using the human resources that we've been fortunate enough to secure for this school year. Know that we are constantly reviewing and examining our processes and procedures to determine how we can best staff for our needs, given these limited resources. Do our work more efficiently and be more responsive to the needs of our students, staff and community. Thank you for taking the time to listen. And now I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Danny Hillman, our assistant superintendent of facilities and business operations.
Thanks, Melanie. Good evening, everyone. I have the the duty of going through some of the topics on the screen here, all related to COVID-19. A couple of these were already addressed by my colleague Christine Huerto about instruction during quarantine and remote options. But as far as the remaining items, I'll go through those as quickly as I can because I do see the clock and we're want to leave enough time for the thought exchange to get started. So I'll just jump in. The district has been and will continue to take the same approach regarding the states and the counties COVID guidance. We will fulfill but not exceed the guidance because we want to maintain a balance of keeping students safe while maintaining access to school and school related activities. When and if the state and county require certain things like vaccinations or masks or testing, we will ensure that these items are implemented appropriately. We've been doing that. We will continue to do that. For not health professionals, we plan to take our direction on issues like this from the county and state health departments. That said, we all are going to advocate clarification when their policies don't make sense to us. Or if what they're describing doesn't work with how schools operate. We're the school professionals, they're the health professionals and we want to be able to work with them as we have been. And we continue to proceed in this manner. We've done it for months. We're going to continue to do it this way. We received several questions about numbers on the number of cases. And I wanted to just redirect everyone to our dashboard, which lives on our school website, our district website. The numbers cover any positive cases on our campuses, including in the classrooms, school events, as well as sporting events and athletics. We received a couple of questions there. It covers individuals that are students, staff individuals, as well as parent volunteers. If we have any positive cases linked to our campuses, they are on this dashboard and I would encourage you to go there to see the data. As far as COVID protocols, more generally speaking, we'll continue to refine our protocols throughout the school year. We up the letters that we send out, the exposure letters, our community letters. We've been providing checklists to staff so that they can follow those and scripts when they're asking families and speaking to them about COVID related symptoms and absences. Many families have written to us describing negative experiences around testing timelines, unclear language in letters, or less than courteous interactions that we that they have had with staff members. They have also committed inconsistent implementation of COVID protocols between school sites. We want to take a minute to thank you for all of these examples because we have continued to take samples to make our practice better and to improve our service to all of you. So if you continue to have these types of experiences, please reach out to your site principal, reach out to us here at the district office. Anytime we get questions, we try to take them and clarify our process, make the letters better, make the scripts better so that the communications that we send, the information that you receive are clearer and more accurate the first time you get it, instead of you having to ask a second or a third follow up question. Please continue to let us know how things are going. We, right after Labor Day, brought on a team of retired administrators, we call them the COVID response team, to assist with the contact tracing and exposure notification process. While this group took much of the work off of our school site staff and principals, our school site staff are still involved in the contact tracing effort. We've had a couple of questions about why is it that school sites are still having to deal with contact tracing? The reality is, is that principals hold the relationships with their families and the office staff are the best people to adjust attendance records when students are absent. So principals and our office staff still need to be involved in the process. But we are hopeful that the work that we've already done and the work we'll continue to do about directing some of the contact tracing efforts and exposure notifications to the response team will continue to make it easier for our site leaders and our site staff to focus on the running of the school as opposed to dealing with COVID. We've also had some questions around privacy. All of our staff members have a responsibility for maintaining confidentiality of your child's records and that includes COVID vaccination and testing results. So any documentation that you provide to the district is included as a part of your child's health record and it's kept confidential and it's only shared with those employees that need to know the information. So if you give us a picture or a copy of your students' test results or a COVID vaccination record, that is considered confidential, goes in the confidential file. It's not shared with anyone else. Testing, COVID testing, we've recently announced an additional testing option for families whose children may have been exposed at school. We are deploying testing teams to school sites who report positive cases the night before. So as an example, beginning next week, if on Monday we get a couple of positive cases reported, we are going to deploy this testing team. They will be using rapid COVID tests. They will go to the school site and they will test any of the students who were deemed close contacts through the contact tracing process. We are adding this up for our COVID response so that students can get tested without having to leave the campus. All that is required for the parent or guardian to do is to fill out a universal consent form. The universal consent form grants the district's testing provider named Agile to perform COVID tests as needed for the remainder of the school year. You only need to fill out the consent form one time. And if your family has already been tested at the testing center here at the district office, then your child is already registered with Agile and you already have an account with their app. It's called the GVP app. And the consent form is part of that. So there's nothing else that you have to do. We would encourage all families to sign the consent form if you're comfortable doing so because it will allow the third party testing vendor and site staff to facilitate a rapid test anytime your child is exposed or we think they've been exposed to a positive COVID case. We're looking at deploying other testing solutions in the future. Some of you have may have heard and learned about surveillance testing. This is something that the state of California is supporting, but we're waiting for them to ramp up the service before we can implement it. We're not able to do this on our own, so we're going to wait for them to support us. We are in line to do so and we hope to have updates on this probably within the next month or two. We also received a lot of questions about vaccinations. We wanted to be able to share with the community that as of today, approximately 92% of our employees have verified that they are vaccinated, fully vaccinated. This covers all employee groups. This includes our credential teachers and staff that work directly with students as well as our classified staff who have a range of positions in the district, clerical support, maintenance, custodial, et cetera. Per state law, all other employees are required to take a test weekly and provide the results to the human resources department. We have implemented this process and so far it's working well. Volunteers are also required to provide vaccination or testing documentation to the district. It's the same timeline that staff have to do this month. So we're using our existing Be a Mentor Sentry volunteer clearance system to assist with this process. Existing parent volunteers, if you're already in the Be a Mentor system, you should have received information from them about how to provide your vaccination clearance or how to update it with testing results. If you have questions on this, please contact your child's school site and they can assist you with the process. We rolled this out today to our office managers and we plan to give the details to principals next week at their regularly scheduled meeting. So if you have questions, please contact them and they can walk you through any of the pieces or direct you to where to go to upload the information. As I mentioned earlier, the district plans to implement state and county health requirements as they are rolled out. And this applies to vaccinations as well. All this time, pardon me, at this time, vaccinations are not required for students and staff, but the governor has signaled that this is something he wants to happen eventually. We will continue to comply with any mandatory vaccination requirements as we have always done. When and if COVID-19 vaccinations are added to the official list, we will enforce that state law, but at this time it is not a requirement. Next slide, please. We also received questions about school lunches and we wanted to touch on that. We continue to look at and review all things related to school lunches. Our child nutrition team continues to serve students every day, but they are also simultaneously looking at various topics that help enhance the service, including things like serving sizes and also how the menus are developed. Options for students to meet their dietary needs and making sure we have menu options that feed our vegetarian students, students that need gluten free options, or even students that are looking for halal choices. We're looking at those items in addition to things like the speeds of the lines, how quickly students can get through the lines, as well as creative solutions like mobile food carts, vending machines that distribute meals, not junk food, and any sort of pre ordering opportunities that students could do via a mobile and then just walk into the lunchroom and pick it up and go eat it. So there's lots of things on the horizon for child nutrition and we're trying to juggle two things at once there, continue to serve food and then also look to the future. We're excited about it. And our child nutrition director continues her outreach to parents, principals and students to make sure that all of your perspectives are getting captured. I know that Zeta Riker, our director, has already reached out to several student groups, especially at the upper grades in high school and middle school and plans to continue to meet with more because she wants to make sure that the dining experience and that your child's nutrition is be are both being satisfied. Next slide. The last topic we got was really the theme that we captured was around traffic, the traffics program and bell schedules and schedules of students on block. So we are aware that changes to the bell schedule this year have caused traffic problems in specific areas in Danville and San Ramon. We want to apologize for the inconvenience that the increased traffic may be causing you and your family and the larger community. We wanted to let you know that we are continuing to monitor the traffic flows with help from the town and the city's traffic divisions. They're really good at this and they're uniquely trained to analyze traffic patterns and communicate with them weekly on any adjustments that we can be that can be made to either the traffics program and the bus schedules to help things out where that program exists. For the parts of the community that are not part of the traffics program, please know that we will make adjustments and changes whenever we can. And if there's more that we can do, we're happy to review those options too. The last item on this slide was really about the bell schedules. Those are also under review and the educational services department will continue to evaluate how bell schedules are affecting instructional minutes and instructional time so that we ensure that a student's time is being maximized, especially when they are absent. We recognize that the more students are in block schedule, if they miss a day, they're missing overall more time. And we want to make sure that students are being supported throughout that. There are several ways in which to do that support and that team will be able to address those because we're going to take the rest of the year and see how the results come out. So those are all the rest of the topics that I had. I want to turn it over to Denise, who I believe is going to walk us through the thought exchange process. Thank you.
I am. Thank you very much, Danny. I'm Denise Jenison. I'm the district's coordinator of communications and public information. And I'm going to introduce you to the thought exchange portion of this town hall where we're going to be able to take your follow up questions about the information that you just heard and respond to them in real time. I'm not going to spend too much time explaining thought exchange. I think you've, many of you have used it with us before. It's a crowdsourcing platform where we can take your feedback in real time and respond to you. What we're going to do today is I'm going to bring up an invitation. So let me go ahead and share my screen. Uh oh, can the host enable participant screen sharing for me? Apologies, we told you technical glitches were going to be our theme tonight.
I'm working on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Malloy. So let me just tell you a little bit about thought exchange while we wait for that or how this process is going to work. I'm going to invite you in and you'll have about four minutes or so where we'll be silent, where you can enter in your thoughts and your rate ratings of other people's thoughts and input. When you rate the input of other people, give it five stars. When you rate the input of other people, give it five stars, if it's something that's interesting to you and you'd like to hear more about it. Rate it with one star, if it's something you feel like you have enough information about and we can move on. To something else, and we're going to try to get to as many questions of yours as we can. We realize we're probably going to run a little bit over tonight, we hope you'll stay with us. We did start a little bit late and so we want to have an opportunity to respond to your follow-up. Questions and satisfy your need to have some additional information. Let me, are we ready for screen sharing? Let's try and see what happens. We are, this is excellent, okay. Okay, so let's get this launched. To join our thought exchange. You can open your camera app, point it at the QR code you see on your screen and it will take you right into the thought exchange. Otherwise, if you'd like to just enter tejoin.com. And that will take you to the website where you can join our thought exchange by entering the nine-digit code that you see here on the screen. It's 286-021-033. I want to remind everybody that your thoughts are all anonymous when you share them with us during the thought exchange. And since we start to see our numbers start to go up. We will move forward. We're using machine moderation tonight, so we ask that you please be thoughtful when you enter your responses. The machine moderation looks for proper nouns and it also looks for inappropriate language. And it will flag those comments and not allow them through, so if you be careful in the way that you craft your comments. We'll be sure that we can see them, other people can see them and rate them and join us in this conversation. Okay, I'm going to move us to our next screen where you can start to see we've some activity going on. I'm going to give us four minutes. To share thoughts where we're going to be silent and give you an opportunity to collect your thoughts and go, let's get that started now. Please go ahead and enter your follow-up questions. Perfect, we're getting started, and the other thing I just want to say is if you did not scan the QR code, it's not too late to join us and participate. Just go to tejoin.com. And enter the nine-digit code that you see in the upper left-hand corner of the screen, you can jump in and join us and enter your thoughts as well. If you see a message saying that not enough thoughts have been shared, rating is not available. We were a little bit slow in getting ramped up, but there's plenty of thoughts in there now. So please try again, you'll be able to rate the thoughts. We're a little bit more than halfway through our time. New thoughts are still coming in, which is great. If you've moved on to the discover stage, why don't you go ahead back and see if there are no thoughts in there that you can rate? You don't need to rate all of the thoughts, you recommend that if you rate a handful of them, based on the number of that have been entered right now. You'll get a good idea of what others are thinking and saying. We have less than a minute left. If you haven't moved on to the rating step, why don't you go ahead and do that now? We're going to try and get to as many of your questions as we can, as quickly as we can while still being thorough. Down to our final few seconds here. Okay. We are ready to move on. Trying to apologize, my view bars in the way of mine, there we go, control panel. Alright.
Okay, the first one Danny?
Sure, so the, one of the reasons why things are prepackaged more this point in the year is simply because of demand. So I'll just throw out one metric for you, at Doorty Valley High School, their best day. Pre-pandemic was about 500 lunches, they're serving, last week they served 2,100 lunches in a day. So this is a supply and demand issue, we are ramping up to meet the increased demand now that the FDA changed the rules and we're feeding anyone who comes. There's no, it's all free, so. With the increased demand, we are ramping up our staffing, you may have heard our other members on the call discuss. How we're having some staffing shortages, we have this in child nutrition as well. And so as of right now, the prepackaged option is the best option to get as many students fed as quickly as possible, but this is not how we want to continue to do things. This is a stopgap measure at this moment. And we intend to expand menu options, not only by the end of this year, but in future years as well.
On this one, I need to turn that over to someone from our end services team, Christine or Debbie?
Sure, thank you, Dr. Malloy, so there will be a communication that's going to be going out in the next week or two where we. Talk about each of the school site and the process by which that school site has parents and families navigating. How to best access their teachers and their staff on that campus regarding their specific students quarantine needs. So that should be coming out to parents and families within the next week or two.
Thank you. So thank you for this question, so we are not requiring that there be video conferencing, which is what I think is meant by Zoom. When teachers are teaching at school and kids are learning at home because they're either sick or they are in quarantine. The reason for that is even though many districts did try to do that last year, that was not a universal requirement in our district. What we've come to understand is trying to teach kids at school. While we are also teaching kids who may be at home is simply not an effective strategy. Which is why we actually didn't do it universally last year as this question would suggest. So what we are doing is what Christine just mentioned. Ensuring that we understand each student's needs, ensuring that there's a connection between our staff members and our kids and families. When they might need to be at home, and then we're going to figure out how to best serve our kids' needs in that process. So critical race theory is something we are hearing about all across the country, my own experience is that. It means very different definitions to everybody. We are not teaching critical race theory as it's defined, at least in the literature. There is a commitment in our district and a requirement in our state that we teach the standards. The standards also include requirements regarding ensuring equitable and inclusive learning environments for all. And we need to support the teaching of those standards. Critical race theory as defined does not exist in the standards in the way I've been hearing about it across our country, so in answer to that question. No, we aren't teaching what I'm hearing some people are concerned about. I appreciate that perspective, but as we've always said, that is not our authority. We are certainly following public health and we will comply with whatever it is that they require. Danny, can you take this question?
Sure, the universal consent form would cover any student that needs to be tested, either via rapid tests at the school site. Or the district's testing center here at the district office. The point of the rapid testing is to make sure that students who may have been exposed. Who are deemed a close contact. Get feedback quickly about whether or not they were actually exposed and are carrying the virus. So if you're deemed as a close contact. You can take the rapid test when the team comes to your school site, regardless if you're vaccinated or unvaccinated.
Thanks. Hong?
So we have GSA clubs are at the secondary and in the elementary schools, we have prison clubs. And so it's another variation with our younger students. Within those clubs where looking at building inclusivity, gender inclusivity with our LGBTQ plus as well as allies. And so the clubs are optional for students to attend, wish to be in those clubs. And really the conversations as well as the learning that happens within those clubs is very authentic. And it's really built to be a safe and inclusive environment for our students.
And I guess maybe if someone's trying to understand what GSA means, it's Gay Straight Alliance, but not all of our schools actually use that terminology, it's just something that. Some do, but I think the purpose of the group is how Hong described it. So I'll just say that we are doing our very best with contact tracing, but we're not contact tracers. And I say that as respectfully as I can, that we are taking on a role that we've never done before. We are working to, as you heard, improve testing. So that we can keep kids at school. Even the fact that we're running a testing center six days a week. In my wildest imagination, as an educator, I would have never thought that would be something that we in other districts would be doing. So please know that we are in agreement regarding the value. We are working as hard as we can to implement it. And we're doing the best we can to learn something that is outside of our expertise. But at least I promise you, we're in agreement on what we're trying to do, which is keep kids at school. Equity means creating the conditions so that each and every student can achieve successfully. It also accepts the fact that not all of us are impacted by conditions in our community the same way, and we need to pay attention to that. When you start using words like equal with equity, it actually is confusing to me, so it may be something that. If someone's interested, they can reach out to Hong directly, because equal usually means same. At least in how I define it, and equity means that we all don't experience things the same way. The conditions don't all impact us the same way, so it's our job as a school district. To be sure that we are doing everything we can to remove any barriers, challenge any bias. Look at any system structures that get in the way of some of our students' success. So that's how we're defining equity and that's the work that we're trying to do together. Rapid tests are available at our district office for anybody who needs to come and get tested. For whatever reasons you feel they need to be tested, Danny, I am correct in saying that, aren't I?
Yes, they are available.
Thanks. A question like this is specific to a classroom, so I would ask you to speak with your principal and work through it. I'm not going to speak to one classroom in a district-type meeting like this, but it's an important question for you to ask your principal to follow up on. I don't know if I would say we should lower expectations. However, I think we should be very cognizant of where each student is. And we need to try to figure out how to meet that student where the student is so that we can help them move forward. And that is something we're committed to. And if you feel that that's not happening in your circumstance, once again, this is a really important issue for you to raise. With your child's teacher or teachers, and if you don't feel that you are receiving the kind of information you need. Or the response you require, please speak with your principal about it. We aren't going to fight about vaccine mandates. We are going to comply, and I understand if I can be really direct again, that our community has diverse views, we respect that. There are desires that our community may have that we do something about that. I can only speak but for myself, I won't speak for the board. I'm an education leader, I'm not a medical or a science leader. I've read the research, I've also seen the different research. And we must require, excuse me, we must rely on those who hold the expertise to create policy in this space. And we will comply with that policy. At this point, the vaccine mandates as we understand it will only be applied after. There's approvals through the process. And we know that if it isn't January, because those approvals would have to come pretty soon. It would be July, assuming that those approvals took place. So again, we're waiting for information on this. We don't, as I shared earlier. It doesn't fall within our authority, we're just waiting like you are for when this could be the rule. Christine, who can speak to this one, or maybe you?
You know, at this point in time, parents who are interested in moving to a virtual option. Need to reach out to our enrollment office and to go ahead and follow that process to apply in. Those who are currently within our online independent study virtual option and would wish to return back to a comprehensive school site. Would work with the school site and Sandy Catarusa, our enrollment coordinator, to place at a comprehensive school site within five days. But it kind of, it kind of works both ways depending upon the need of the family, so. But it kind of, it kind of works both ways depending upon the need of the family. So best advice I can offer is to please reach out to our enrollment coordinator, Sandy Catarusa here at the district office and she can help you navigate the best steps for you to take based on your particular situation.
And again, not knowing all of the foundations to the questions and we apologize for that. Please know that the virtual option that exists right now in our system is the venture independence. Christine, am I getting that correct? Thank you. So the regular time for all students requires a level of staffing we don't have. The state has communicated to us that they are willing to support this process. We're very much ready to be a part of this process with state personnel so that we could do this type of surveillance testing. But at this point, the state is still trying to hire enough people to serve districts effectively and we're waiting to hear more. Christine, could you speak to Universal TK?
Sure, absolutely. So we are following the rules and regulations that are being put forth by the CDE around implementing Universal TK. As it stands right now, we accept children with the birth date on or before September, on or before September 2nd between December 2nd. And so the plan is to expand that based on the birth dates over the course of the next two to three years. And in the upcoming weeks, we are going to begin to talk about our process for enrollment, what that's going to look like specific to San Ramon Valley Unified. So we will have future discussions and communications around Universal TK plans.
Maybe one more question? Linda?
So one of the things that we're doing in regards to options are looking at not only tapping on the shoulders of some of our current paraeducators and our substitute teachers who have been interested in becoming special education teachers and working with them in terms of supporting that interest and helping them to get connected with universities and working on getting them short-term emergency permits as well as reaching out individually to universities and some of our institutes of higher education locally around getting some of their current teachers who might be intern eligible to come on board. We're also looking at the possibility of how we utilize teachers who might be interested in coming on board who are fully credentialed but may not be available for in-person instruction and how we might get creative with virtual options for that. So we're really looking at a variety of different things in this category.
Thank you to all of you for your participation this evening. We do have your questions, so we will certainly, if we couldn't get to them, provide other ways to incorporate messages in the communications that we send out to you. Please know that our partnership with our community remains our priority, working closely with our staff, our students, our parents, our caregivers, because we can only work through the challenges we've been talking about together. Please know that your school, as I said, is probably the best place to go first for most of the concerns. But by all means, if you believe what you are wondering about is much more of a district decision or a district direction, then by all means, reach out to us as well so that we can support. Please pay attention to when we send out more information on the access to excellence process, including the video that we couldn't share tonight in the spirit of technological challenges. Thanks again. Thanks to our team here at SRVUSD. Have a great night. Bye for now.